This is nice. I don't know if you're getting that one back.
Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the workshop for the Sarasota County School Board. And first on our agenda is a review of the Sarasota STEM Academy Charter application. What I thought I would do, do you have any opening remarks first?
No, just straight to Natalie.
Okay. What I thought I would do is that after Mrs. Roker, Doc, excuse me, Dr. Roker is finished[89.57][89.57]introducing, what I would like to do is to each one of us to take five minutes and ask questions, not a dissertation, but questions. So if you ask questions, you'll have five minutes each to ask a question, all questions. And we'll start with Bridgette and we'll move this way since I always do Shirley and Jane first, so I thought I'd give you a chance to be first. All right? Dr. Roker.
I finally paid off my school loans.
Well, we're in a workshop, so really you're Natalie. Because we're not formal in a workshop.
Hey, look, I have my notes and it said good morning, so I had to adjust them to say good afternoon. Okay? So I'm ahead. So I usually have my notes and then I forget. But anyway, as you know, first on your agenda is the discussion of the Sarasota STEM Academy application. And behind me today, we have members of the board and also from the management company, and I'll call them up in a minute. But I'd like to first, for the viewing public and for the record, just briefly go over the process that we've gone through, you know, so far, and to talk about next steps, and also to orient you to some of the materials that you received in preparation for today. Okay, I'll glance at my notes now.
Thank you.
So we received the application on August 1st, and the committee has been reviewing the application using the state's required evaluation tool. We have an awesome CRC Committee, Charter Review Committee, and it's comprised of district and school-based administrators. We have a charter school leader on the committee, as well as a parent community representative. And the whole combined committee represents a wide array of expertise in areas of, of course, education, school operations, finance. We cover pretty much everything that's covered in the application. So we've been meeting very, spending a lot of time going through the application to see, to determine the extent to which each of the standards meets the criteria. And you've seen from the report in the application, I see Mr. Robinson has the big application, that there are 22 standards grouped into three parts. The first part is your educational design, areas of, of course, curriculum, assessment, services for ESC and ELL kids, et cetera. The second part is the organization, governance, the management, and parental involvement and student recruitment. And the last piece is operations, transportation facilities, as well as finance and the budget. And there is another section called ESP. And as you know, some applicants choose to contact with a third-party management company or ESP. And in this case, this one does, so that's why that section is also completed as well. So let me see. This is the first step in the process. And, you know, because of Hurricane Irma and all of the delays and school closures launches in Sarasota, but throughout the state that we've all enjoyed but are glad that it didn't impact us too, too badly, the applicant was in agreement to adjust the timeline. As you recall, we were going to have this discussion at the last board work session. So we've adjusted the timeline because it's very important that we be able to have all those key steps in the process, because Sarasota does have that more comprehensive process with the written review, the board workshop, work session, the opportunity for the applicant to respond to some of our questions, and then the capacity of the interview, which is occurring next week. So it's pretty comprehensive. Then the final step will be, the committee will convene again to review the applicant's written responses. And at the capacity of the interview, we ask more questions to corroborate the information that's in the application and to evaluate the school's capacity to operate a successful school here in Sarasota County, because we're special. So then the final report will come before you at the November 7th School Board meeting, where you will take action to approve or deny the application. So if there's no questions about the process, I will ask our guests to come up to the table.
Thank you.
It's kind of squishy coming up. And of course, when it's red, it's on, just counterintuitive, but that's okay.
Could you each please introduce yourself and what your position is to the charter school application, rather?
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity.
That's better now, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Roker. We look forward to answering whatever questions you have, and then we're also looking forward to the interview session, the more in-depth session with staff next week as well. My name is Frank Bolaños. I'm part of the management team. I'm a co-founder of Avant Guard Academy. My experience includes having served on many nonprofit organizations in both higher education as well as K-12. The K-12 sector had the unique experience of being a school board member and chairman of the Miami-Dade County School Board. So there, I certainly saw the side of charter schools and parental choice from the authorizer point of view, and also very much so from the compliance point of view. And those are some of the experiences that I bring to the table as we work with charter school groups.
Good afternoon. My name's Daniel Kuhar, and my role in this capacity is the president of the founding board. My background, about 10 years as a school administrator. In particular, my expertise is in STEM and marine science, and that's kind of a focus of this program if it goes through. And that's almost, it mirrors exactly the school that I helped to build and develop and run in, you know, on Maui, Hawaii for 10 years. Very similar, lots of community partners, full STEM focus for all students, and then very heavy in the marine sciences.
What year was that school?
It's called Kihei Charter School on Maui.
I'm jealous that I've not ever been to Hawaii. My name is Jennifer Lucas, and I have, I'm in my 12th year of experience in charter schools. I actually started off as a parent. I have four children. And enrolled my child, my oldest, who just graduated as a kindergartner into a charter school. And it really was a career-changing, life experience changer for me. I went back to school, started off as a teacher, and then grew through that system as an instructional coach, curriculum coach, assistant principal, principal, and region director. I currently serve as the co-chair, as well, of the North Carolina State Association for All Public Charter Schools, and serve as a master trainer for new schools and open schools, primarily in school improvement and continuous improvement. My role, if the school is improved, would actually to be working with the school directly with principals, parents, staff, curriculum choices, using data-driven instruction, which is my favorite thing to do, and community relations here on the ground. I'm in Sarasota and love to be here.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is, can you hear me?
No. Put the red.
There you go. Okay, great, thank you. My name is Fabio Lope. I am on the board. And my experience has been mainly in digital marketing and project management. My objective's always been that of making sure that the goals that are set forward are straightforward, are calculated, they're achievable, and that the risks are measurable and under control, and to make sure that what is committed is what is achieved. Also, very knowledgeable on digital marketing. Can you hear me now again? Okay. Very knowledgeable on digital marketing. And have worked a lot with, with schools, or volunteered a lot with schools and with Rotary and with other entities to help to let people know the message of contribution, of wanting to work with society, is the only word that's coming up right now, wanting to work with the community, thank you, that's the word I was looking for, to achieve certain goals. Irma, I think, had the latest hurricane, for example, was a very good example, where immediately worked with the community to get message out, to let people know, and to, and to try to bring help and assistance wherever possible. I contribute a lot to community and community.
So what I understand, only one of you is from Sarasota.
As far as living here?
Yes.
I live here, you're, he's in Tampa.
South Florida.
In South Florida. And our other board members, so I just want to say thank you for this workshop, because I know we did change the timeline. Three of the other board members are local also. One is in Fort Myers, the other two are local and work in schools. And so they're all making up time from the time off. One is sitting, I think, for feelies today. The state exams were rescheduled, unfortunately, for today. And the other two are also in school, so they couldn't come, but hopefully they'll be here next Tuesday.
Thank you. Bridgette? Again, five minutes, I'll time you.
I'm gonna push it, I'm kidding. Well, first and foremost, I always want to say thank you to Natalie and Katrina. They are a small but mighty group, and this is a rigorous process, and they are very committed and work hand-in-hand with all of our charter schools, and I think that's largely why many of ours are very successful. So thank you, to both of you, and thank you for being here. I do, I just want to start off with some, the first thing that jumped out at me from the get-go was, I wanted to articulate and have a better understanding of the partnerships that are listed, it's on page three, as it relates to Mot Marine River Review High School and Bobby Jones Country Club. Can one of you speak to what specifically that partnership is and kind of how that's developed, and kind of go into the details there?
I can do that, and then you can follow up a little bit. I know you're on a timer, so I'll go through. So yes, I have four children and we're in Sarasota schools. My oldest just graduated out of River View. My youngest is actually in Sarasota Middle. My oldest was in the marine biology classes there, and my youngest wants to go into marine biology. And so I had reached out when this conversation about doing a STEM school came up to her teacher, who referred me to their principal there, who then referred me back to one of the assistant principals, who really focuses time and has an environmental sciences background in marine biology. So I went and toured their program, was really impressed with what they have going on, and we kind of just had a lot of conversations about what that would look like at a K-8 level. Discussions that I think were really important, looking at my own kids and what their progress was, is creating a STEM school in those types of fields at K-8 that then is like an automatic feeder into a high school here that's so successful that that's what their specialty is. And we were just really excited about what that partnership could look like. Teacher PLCs in charter schools, especially at middle school, you generally only have one or two people per content area, depending on the size of your school, so they don't have a lot of, you know, department, you know, people to go to. And bringing kids in and taking advantage of what they have and expanding on that relationship. So the purpose with that particular one is for matriculating our graduating eighth graders into successful high school programs and preparing them for that, and having PLCs and sharing resources. Mot Marine was, is a great partner. I know Dan can talk a little bit more about that, but it's a natural, you know, partnership for them in starting something from the ground up and building on real-life application. Really excited about the opportunities that they have, both for professional development for teachers. And I guess I'm not sure how many, you know, former educators are here, but you can't have a good school if you don't have teachers who can then teach the curriculum. And so a really big push for me is on the professional development side and making sure that we're not giving materials to teachers that they can't implement, or asking them to do something that they can't do, which isn't fair. So to work with them in a few different manners. Some of it is professional development for staff, and then the rest is actual projects for children and offering them equity and access to resources they may not ever have, you know, opportunities to be there. They have SCUBA Robotics going on, which is just huge, and working in the community in a service learning aspect for what they've identified as specifically Sarasota needs. The Bobby Jones Golf Course is adjacent to the land that we've identified for the school, and that is also a perfect fit for environmental sciences. The lead manager there, Sue Martin, actually brought it to me after one of the meetings, and it is called First Green, yes, not First Tee, which is a national program. And it is an amazing opportunity for both their golf course in the community and for school. And you realize, kids can be on the golf course and studying horticulture and environment and bugs and moisture and using science and math and all kinds of things. So they're very natural partnerships. The most important thing being that they're directly tied to the school, they're good for kids K through eight, and they offer kids from different areas that may never even see a golf course if it wasn't for this type of a school or opportunity to do things that they may never have done before. Long-term purpose is matriculating them into successful high schools.
Are we under five? No, you're not. Eric.
Okay, so next. Yeah, sorry.
Please make sure he answers a little bit more.
Yeah, okay.
Because I'm sure there was nothing in the application from Mot Marine and from, I'm not gonna bring that in.
No, I saw them here, so I thought we were doing the will do, yeah.
She's gonna cut me off.
Okay.
So which one of you is from the ESP?
I'm one from the ESP.
So you're two from the ESP. Do you want any other ESPs for any other, other schools?
I help to support the school in Hollywood, which is Avant Guard Hollywood, and.
What grade is that school?
There are two schools.
I'm sorry, what's the grade of that school?
Sure. There's two schools there.
In Broward?
There's a middle and high school in Broward. One is a B and one is a C. It's our second year, the K-8, and we were two points away from a B.
And what schools are you involved in?
The same two schools, plus Avant Guard Academy and Pleasant Hill, which is a C school.
Is that the one, that's not the one in Osceola?
That's one of the ones in Kissimmee. There are two schools in Kissimmee.
But you're not involved in the one that's in Osceola?
I'm not in the management company of the one in North Kissimmee.
Right.
They're both in Osceola County. They're both in Osceola County, one is in North Kissimmee. The one I'm involved is, is in South Kissimmee, which is referred to as the K-8.
And have you ever been involved in the one, in the other ones?
I was involved as a co-founder, but not as a management company.
As co-founder, but not the.
Not the management company. There's a different management company there.
Okay, but so you're not involved in the.
No, I'm not.
Because even though this entity is separate from those, I have to look at not only the entity, but the people and the depth of management that's, that's going to be involved in that. And so my question is for the board person, how did you pick this man, this ESP? Did you go out and submit bids? Please make sure your answer's quick, because I haven't got many times.
Sure.
Because Julie ran out the clock out, so.
So there's, there's an organization called Building Hope, and they basically fund and start charter schools nationwide. And they actually identified the demographic in North Sarasota where this school is proposed to be built, and then reached out to AES to kind of start this project. So as far as how did we land on AES, you know, I've worked with, you know, several management companies in the state of Florida, but mostly because AES was reached out to by that organization.
Now, you just talked about that location, because that location is a very mature location. I mean, it's not a high-growth area. There are plenty of other schools in that area. And so where do you think you're going to draw those students from? Because it's a, it's not a growing part. I mean, there's houses are built up in that section of the county. So where do you think you're going to get them from? Are you expecting to get them from Manatee, from other charter schools, other public schools in the area?
Mm-hmm.
And I only got two minutes left, so.
I would say a combination of everything you're saying. I think in.
So what percentage from Manatee?
I mean, you never know when you put your enrollment out exactly where all your students are going to come from. If I had to guess, we may get 20%. I'm not really 100% sure. It's close. I mean, there's, parts of Manatee County are just as close to that as the rest of Sarasota County.
Thank you. My next question, I've only got five minutes, so I'm.
Sure.
My, my next question is, has to do with your, your reading program. I was, I thought your elementary reading, reading program was, was acceptable, but your middle school program, when I read it, seemed lacking, almost nonexistent. So can you, in.
Forty-five seconds.
Forty-five seconds, explain to me, you know, the, the theory behind your, your middle school program and why it wasn't in, in detail enough into your application?
Sure. And that was actually one of the responses that I worked on, you know, since we got the feedback. It'll look very similar, with the exception of the blocks of time, you know, so the interventions are very similar, although in elementary, they do 90-minute blocks of reading. In the middle school, you typically will do like a 60-minute language arts block, and then a 60-minute reading block. And then that reading block is where remediation and intensive services can be provided.
And then finally, in my last six, 60 seconds, I want to go into the finances. It looked like you guys were coming in like right on the wire, almost to the point that we have a referendum, we'll talk about later in March, that if that doesn't pass, you guys are going to be operating in the red. And so one of the, one of the issues is, I gotta make sure you guys, your plan is financially sound. So what are you guys going to do to make sure your, your plan is more financially sound? Because you guys talked about transportation. You guys said, we're going to contract with somebody, we'll use a school district, we'll do this. When you guys talked about meals, you guys gave six different ways you guys are going to do meals. You guys did six different ways to transportation. So my question to you is, how are you going to ensure that you guys are financially viable when currently, if you don't, if you don't get the referendum dollars, you may be in the red? And right now, for a South County school, if you're in there, if you draw people from Charlotte, we don't provide referendum dollars for those people. So we may very well do that same thing, and if we do that, you may have problems financially. What do you have to say about that? And I'm done. I don't know how to stop this. Can they answer my question?
Yes, shut up then.
Okay.
You know, you're gonna go around again, because we have an hour.
Oh, okay.
I just want you to do five minutes.
You didn't tell me that. You told me I only have five minutes. I'm like, oh my God, quick, quick, quick.
I have to keep you on target.
You didn't tell me that.
You guys run away if I don't keep you on target.
You didn't tell me I was going to do it again. So can you, can you answer the question?
I can help answer that question.
Okay.
And, and we'll get feedback. I think the number one thing is Building Hope is our financial partner. The reason that that's so important is they're working with us primarily on the facility, as well as all of our FFE and T and financing. And as far as, I know questions will come up about student enrollment, and what happens if you don't hit exactly that number, and what happens if 80% are from Sarasota, 20% are from Manatee, and the per pupil revenue is different, so I understand the way, where the way that goes. We have built a couple of different budgets with different enrollment targets and contingency plans on what that looks like. In any one of your budgets, your, you know, your biggest percentage of your budget, budget is always staffing. And second to that is generally facilities, and then what's left over becomes all of your operating expenses from there. So of course, managing your staffing model appropriate to your enrollment is number one, and having a really strong financial partner to work with you on what your lease rates are and what your debt service and other items are. So we've never really had a problem in managing that budget, working with what we have, certainly understand the line of questioning on where your kids are going to come from and what does that look like, building in a contingency fee. So, I mean, that's a start, and I understand it, so I don't, I don't feel uncomfortable, and I'm sure in the capacity interview, we will be able to answer that or provide some of the answers that were in there. On transportation, lunch food, contracting.
I'm out of time, so.
Okay. Jane?
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for being here. My question is, VPK. I noted VPK. I haven't seen that in any of your other models. What is that about?
Strong proponents of early learning, childhood. We understand, of course, that all of you can only approve us as a K-8, but we did want to be, you know, transparent in the process, that if we're approved for a K-8, that we would look to get approved for VPK. I did have the opportunity as a principal in North Manatee to have four or five sections of VPK, and in fact, started a private preschool below that. And that was really important to me, to give those kids an opportunity for early learning. Our VPK students entered our kindergarten with much higher kinder readiness screeners that we associated to it. And so for us, it's one more opportunity to serve a local area and provide an early foundation for kids and get them kindergarten-ready.
In terms of, of childcare, are you looking to do a paid-by-parent childcare at the school?
Like early care, after care? We will have an early care and an after care fee-based, which has not been determined yet. We run early care and after care at all of our other schools. And the VPK, of course, is, you know, vouchers for those parents unless they want to stay for early or care or wrap or add-on to that additionally.
Why did you withdraw your application from Manatee County?
We wanted to be able to focus on the application here, and I live directly here, and we also just started another school in Hillsborough, and so we decided that we wanted to stay focused in Sarasota and work with the partnerships that we have. We felt that it was a strong school, more community support, and something that would be the most successful out of everything else that we had.
Give me an update on Avant Guard in Hillsborough County, the new school that did not open on time.
Okay. It's open, it's running, it's doing great. I encourage you, if you feel, to join the Facebook page or check out the parent page. The PTO had their elections, Robotics Club has already started and begun, music class and music classes have already begun. I understand that there is a delay on construction, its construction. The management company is not the GC. There were plenty of things that were way outside of our scope of control. The building owner and the GC have worked on that. It was super frustrating. We were able to secure a backup facility for classes to begin. We provided a free STEAM camp during that transitional time before we were sure exactly what day the school was going to be open. But the parents and the staff that we have could not be happier. It's a fantastic program. I'm not proud of the delays. I'm not happy that it happened, but I have to tell you, I'm super proud of the work that's there, the staff that's there, and the families that are there, and the support that it has has been phenomenal.
Well, there was some conjecture about Hillsborough County allowing you all to be late, and.
True.
I would hope, because you're looking at a very, very uphill battle here with what you're planning to do in the time to start school next year. I know that you have the modular building and, and that issue, but that's quite costly.
Right.
But I would hope that you would have a contingency built in, because when school starts, we consider.
Right.
School to start for everyone.
Absolutely.
So that's a concern to me. And, you know, I'm concerned about how much interaction there is with AES versus your board. We have a plan to work with your board, obviously, our agreements with your board. Do I know you, Daniel? Have we met somewhere before?
You look familiar.
I don't know where, but yes, it's nice to see you anywhere. But I'm, I'm concerned about that aspect. Any comment?
About the interaction between the board and AES?
Who's on first, second, and third? AES or the board of directors? And you have some board who live here, you live here.
Sure.
Or Tampa, right?
Tampa.
And, and the other two of you live in, in Miami-Dade. So, and I know you don't have to live in the county, I get that, but I just was concerned about, about the, the interface with AES and who really is in charge. I know that AES will have a lot to do with teachers being hired and a lot to do with evaluating folks, so I was just curious about that.
Well, really, you know, my expertise is in program. So, you know, I was drawn to this project because, you know, I'm a true believer in the STEM initiative and marine science is a passion of mine. And, you know, same, the, valuing the importance of partnerships, you know, when our students can interact with powerful, you know, scientific partnerships in our community, and even the Bobby Jones Golf Club, there's a lot of potential there for, you know, water quality science, and I would hope that they would merge into physics, physical science and projectile motion. So, you know, the partnerships, very powerful, community service aspect is a big, you know, I'm a big fan of that. And again, these are all components that I had put together in my program in Hawaii with great success. So that's what drew me to this. And then, you know, who's in charge? It depends on which aspect, you know, you're talking about. My expertise is program, and I would like to say that I have a big pull over that.
You know, one of the, one of the things that I would like to interject is in reference to project management and projects, okay? That's one of the reasons why, I know, we thought it would be very important to have project management on the board of directors, somebody with experience, because, you know, there's risks and there's things that happen, and part of making sure that the deliverables are done and the expectations are satisfied is part of what you need to do when you organize a project. And therefore, it's important to have that input inside the board of directors, so that when you were saying, for example, on the, on the construction issue with the project management, you would have your, your risk, you would have your risk assessment, you would have those things in place, so as to make sure that all of those contingencies are taken care of ahead of time, and you don't end up in that situation. That's one of those things that we're trying to make sure that it doesn't happen.
Sorry, if I may quickly add, the, the board of directors of the school is in charge. They, they, they hold the, the authority that I refer to as delegated authority by this board. In many ways, the charter entity and the charter organization has been created to, to be similar to what the interaction and relationship is between an elected school board or an appointed school board. school board and staff. They set policy. Our application, I think, in that area is very clear. In the governance section, they set the policy, they oversee the principal, the principal reports to the board, and they oversee a performance-based component and performance-based standards as far as the management company itself is concerned as well.
I just have a couple of follow-up questions. Mr. Kuhr, could you, there were three entities involved in kind of the starting of the school, and I didn't catch the first one. What was the first one?
The Building Hope.
Okay.
Is that the one that I referenced?
I believe so.
That's the one that, again, approached AES and kind of started this project, and will provide a lot of the funding to get the project started.
Okay. And then they reached out to AES, and then the local board was formed, how?
Well, so, you know, so AES was approached, and then Ms. Lucas and I have worked together in the past, at least, not directly. There was a school where she was there, and then I was there the year after she had left. But that's where we had met. And so they approached me because of my expertise in the STEM and marine science background, and then also my administrative background, so I know the inner workings of programs and what it takes to start one, because I had start and built and ran one in Hawaii.
Would it be correct for me to say that it was a management company seeking a board as opposed to a board seeking a management company?
It was probably a combination of the two. Other board members came together. One board member who's on our board called another and said, "We'd really like for you to be a part of it."
Okay. Let me ask a real direct question, and it has a lot to do with our history here in Sarasota. Does this board have the right to terminate its agreement with the management company, or does the management company have the right to appoint a new board? So do your relationship go sour?
No, absolutely, the board has the right to change the management company. In fact, it is one of the responsibilities of the board to make sure that the requirements and that the obligations that the board has are met. If the management company is not in any way, shape, or form complying to those, we have to absolutely take action. There's no doubt about that in any way.
Okay. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. I just have a few follow-up questions from there. So what I heard is that you're, combined, you're all involved in three charter schools, right?
Right.
One's a B, one's a C, and one's a D.
No, AES is involved in three charters, one's a B, one's a C, and the other one just opened in Tampa. In addition to that, I'm involved in an additional charter that AES is not involved in, which is a C school.
Where does the D school come in?
The D school is in North Kissimmee, which is governed by a different board and managed by a different management company.
I know they're all different boards, but it seems to me you're incestuous. It seems like everything is run through the AES, because that's what I read through this whole thing. That was my conclusion at the end.
Madam Chair, if I may, then Jennifer can jump in. I can see why it may look that way, but our history and the way we proceed is very different than how many other management companies do it. We have no desire to be this huge mammoth of a management company running vanilla cookie-cutter programs throughout different areas, many of them have ventured outside the state and are nationwide. Our purpose is really to be part of a mission-driven charter school. And by mission-driven, it means that local individuals need to drive it, including having a local board, which is quite different to the way most other management companies want to operate. So if this is a local board, this local board, as Mr. Galoppi says, will make the decision. The involvement of AES in these schools has been because they've had the local knowledge and the local experience, which is not the case in that Kissimmee school, which was the initial school that started four years ago with a different group. So our process is different, that's why you're kind of looking for a common thread. But in reality, there is not, because if we have an opportunity at some time in the future in another community, we want it started in a similar way, or we want to be part of the start in a similar way, where it's really driven by local board members, and it's responsive to local needs.
What do you consider local board members?
Every side in the county. And any, oftentimes, we'll start with, or will be part of a board that starts with founding board members. It's not unusual for founding board members to step out. And part of the development that we see is additional board members from Sarasota would come in at the right time, and any non-local board member could step back.
So any, almost anyone who is the chartering board would not necessarily be the board, because you'll be switching along the way to make it a local board, but it's not the local board who is chartering this.
The majority of the current, the majority of the current founding board members are local individuals.
There's only one.
There's only one here.
There's only one. In reality, Mr. Galoppi is the only one from South Florida, Mr. Kuhr is not from Sarasota, he's closer, from the Tampa area. Mr. Galoppi has expressed that at any moment in time, if there's an additional local member that wants to step in, he would step out of the board.
I'm just following up with what Dr. Todd said. All right.
Can I just clarify one piece of what you were asking as far as AES's involvement in those? So the only two schools or two projects that we've actually been involved in at all are Broward County and currently in Hillsborough before here. And that reason for us is those are counties that we have worked in and have an entire network of teachers, community relations, and families and people that we have worked with. So we've never actually been anywhere else and aren't currently involved in any projects where we don't actually have roots or a network on the ground in that community. So for us, it's only Broward and Hillsborough at this time.
Follow-up to Mr. Robinson's question. In your budget, you have referendum dollars in there. That's really incorrect, because there's no guarantee that you will receive referendum dollars. That is up to the board to decide whether or not a new company coming in would receive referendum dollars. So how could you build your budget on money that's not there?
So that's a fair question, and I think that our other colleagues and I will work on the budget for the capacity interview for you to provide what would be a balanced budget without referendum dollars.
And the last thing that I'd like to ask you about is that you say you will do transportation from two to four miles. I believe that's what it is, but yet you're looking at a five-mile radius for students. So there's some ambiguity there that's not clear at all as a关系to transportation.
Right. And I saw in the rubric that there were some questions, first starting, I think, from the target demographic. And I think that our goal is first to serve within that five-mile radius of, that we targeted for you. We certainly understand that open enrollment is really anywhere now, in the county or outside of the county. But our goal is to provide busing, and generally, the, I guess, normally acceptable bus routes or things that make sense for buses to run is within that two-to-five-mile radius before you're having kids on buses for 50 minutes or longer with a lot of routes. So we are absolutely going to plan to provide busing for sure. We are not limiting the target enrollment to within only five miles. That's just where we would, I think, focus is what we put for our market, for our targeted marketing, to make sure that we're offering those students in that area a school of choice where they don't have one necessarily. So the busing, I apologize, and I feel, again, in the capacity interview, we can clarify or clean up some of those inconsistencies or questions that you have on where the transportation will run.
Well, I think that I'm a little disappointed in the format of the program that you submitted. It's just really not thorough at all.
Okay.
Shirley?
I'm a bit confused on what brings you here. We've had, and I'm not sure if it's the same people behind the curtain on the last several charter schools that have come forward on a property on Beneva. But there's one charter school, Beneva LLC. Is this the same? Do you know if they're behind the group that contacted Building Hope to contact you?
I have no idea. I mean, I don't.
Who's paying to build your school?
Building Hope.
Building Hope. So apparently, that's the connection between Mr. Benjamin Norton, who runs these EB5 programs. I mean, are you aware that it's an EB5 program that's going to be building your school?
I'm only aware that it is already funded, and they came to us and said, "We really want you to be a part of this and to help start a school there."
So when you heard they were funded, did you ask who's funding them?
I did not ask that question, only because Building Hope is the national leader.
Did anybody ask that question, who's funding the school and why?
I didn't ask for the particular names. I understand that EB5 funding is certainly part of a lot of funding.
Did anyone on the board ask who is funding this school, this particular school? Who is getting the funding and wants this school here and why? Anybody ask that question?
That's Building Hope.
Yeah.
And you didn't ask Building Hope who's funding you and why, this particular school?
There are schools funded nationwide. I understand, because you've had this experience with other applicants for the same purpose.
Well, you basically don't care where the funding is coming from. It's just there, and you're going to take advantage of this, apparently.
Well, if there's an issue that we need to look into, we'll look into it. But funding for schools nationwide is done from either EB5, from hedge funds, or from national entities like Building Hope. That's how every single school nationwide is built.
I guess that opens up another can of worms. Also, that, so who is going to own the physical school? Because right now, charter school Beneva, who is this Benjamin Norton who runs the EB5 program, owns the land. Who is going to own the school? Not the operation of it. Who's going to own the school, and how much money are they going to be paid?
So we don't have, or the board does not have, an executed lease at this time. Currently, the landowner will own the school, and the school will certainly lease or rent that property. And our goal has always been, after five years, when the school has clean audits for three to five years, to work towards bonding out so that the school itself can buy out that lease, and the school itself would own it eventually. The goal is for the school.
But right now, you have no idea what that lease is going to look like. You don't know what you're going to be charged in lease payments?
I think there's not a draft lease, because we don't have an approved school, and the board themselves are the ones who have to sign a lease once there is a school. I do understand that we know what the lease rates are and that they're tied to enrollment as opposed to one set lease amount for the entire year. It's tied to what the enrollment is, so that it's affordable for the school. And so the reason that we were interested in working with Building Hope at all is that they provide those lease rates at a school rate that is actually affordable, so you can do a good program.
And if this company decided to sell the school, and of course, maybe in your second or third year, you didn't have the money to buy it, somebody else would get it, and then somebody else would be charging you a lease, and you have no idea what those lease agreements would be, or what your lease payments would need to be.
Well, it wouldn't be a short-term lease. I don't think any of the governing boards have ever entered a short-term lease for a school less than 15 or 20 years. I've never seen one.
I noticed that one of your board members, Patrick Scully, is involved in a Gulf Coast Charter Academy school. And they have that school for sale. I think it's in its third year of operation. So it's only the third year of operation. They're trying to sell this school for $8.5 million, and they lease it at $2. It says in the advertisement, they lease it for $2.10, well, $2.11 per square foot. And the net operating income, I would imagine that's the profit, $598,125. So it looks like owning and leasing a school is a rather profitable sort. And then they're telling somebody else, "Here, why don't you buy this? You can make money doing this." And I would think, not knowing what your lease is going to be, or who even the leaseholder is going to be, would be a concern for somebody opening a business.
Again, I want to revert back to the fact that we and the board is, feels good about the fact that the partner is Building Hope. If the partner coming forth were just an investor group, I believe that that entity would not have the track record that Building Hope has nationwide. Building Hope is a nonprofit organization. Its mission is to help charter schools develop when it constructs these programs. That's why we were very happy to hear from Building Hope. When they put together these programs, they put it in such a way.
Well, I think there's sort of a nonprofit front for these for-profit people behind the scenes that are buying, building, and leasing these buildings. And if you people don't have that concern, I have a concern. I also have a concern about all the different names. International School of Excellence, and sometimes it's called the Sarasota STEM Academy, sometimes Sarasota STEAM, sometimes the avant-garde. And even in the application, some of those names change. Is it going to be Sarasota avant-garde, which is what you applied, what somebody applied to the city for a school avant-garde for 1,400 students? But we've got an application for maybe 850 students called STEM Academy. Is this the same building we're talking about that you're going to be using, that they're applying to the city, and what's the difference? Why the difference in the name and the difference of numbers?
So the answer is yes on the letter of intent, which I think is what you're referring to, is the letter of intent versus the name and the enrollment table put forth in the charter application. The letter of intent was submitted many months before we all got to get together, work with our partners, talk about in-depth more of what that target population is. I think 1,400 students is too high in Sarasota County, in an area where somebody had referenced it's not a larger or growing, you know, new community, and that the numbers that are smaller numbers is actually more appropriate and probably more likely for what a long-term target enrollment is.
I do have.
That's what I would say the difference in the larger, smaller number is.
I do have more questions, and as I said in an email, I don't think an hour was long enough. And I was assured that we would be having more time to finish all of our questions. So I'm going to pass it now, but I want to make sure that we don't stop at 2:00, because I was told we could extend until we ended.
Well, nobody told me that, as chair.
I sent you an email.
But that didn't, there was no agreement there. Bridgette?
I want to go back to, well, kind of summarizing on some of the points that Shirley and even Eric had made, is the location of it is not an area of major growth. Obviously, Sarasota is experiencing major growth, so I think as a board member and for the community, it would be nice to see more of a thought process about that component of it and to fill a need where we potentially are looking at building schools in the future. And I think this particular property has certainly come up as far as another opportunity for another charter school, which, as a board member, I would say that you want to see that the intent is truly to fill a need and where the desire is. And so it gets a little muddy, and I can understand very much where she's coming from on that part. So a couple of things is projections, enrollment. I understand they are, in fact, everyone doesn't get them perfect, but I am concerned with that area, whether or not you would be able to actually fulfill that. And I think that's, and that location also feeding into referencing one of our high schools, and that plan, that programmatic standpoint to fill into that, I mean, is that an actual guarantee of something that's going to, you know, move forward, that partnership even existing? So I have some concerns. I certainly think that the contingency that Jane had mentioned, too, I think the timeline from construction is very concerning. And the worst thing ever in me, in my mind, is if a family chooses, it's their choice to choose where they go, but the continuity and not avoiding any kind of disruption is first and foremost for me. So there are some areas where I feel like you are, you have not connected some serious gaps. And the location, to me, still concerns me again, because I just don't know if that's, if out of all of the places and locations in Sarasota, if that would be the most advantageous of a location. And then I go into some of the program uniquenesses, is those partnerships. A lot, I understand you can't execute contracts prior to this particular happening, that makes sense, but in the event those partnerships don't don't meld, or go to fruition, what is your contingency plan there?
Well, partnerships do take time, you know. So currently, there's mutual desire to build those partnerships, and so that's a good place to start. But it does take time to, you know, usually a year or two to kind of figure out how you can mutually benefit one another and build a true partnership. So I mean, it'll start, let's take Moat for an example. You know, many schools use it as a field trip place, you know. So you pay to play, you go there, you take your field trip. Our desire is to take it beyond that. You know, our desire is to actually have it be mutually beneficial. So one example that we've discussed with them would be, you know, they have a huge need to feed manatees, for example. So on our end, we would do the hydroponic science to grow the romaine lettuce, and then it would help support, you know, and mitigate some of their costs to feed the manatees. So the students would get to learn hydroponics. It would be a mutually beneficial project. So that's just one example of hopefully many.
Right. And I understand the cultivation of relationships. Is there, but there's no letter of intent or potential that shows us that that's actually likely. I mean, Moat Marine is a world-renowned-
I'm not sure why that's not in there. We have it. It was one of the first partnerships that we had. And Brad Tanner is their executive director, who intended to be here and couldn't, so he's hoping to be here next.
Okay.
So if he's able to be here at the next one, he's more than happy to stand up and say exactly what they intend to do and want to do.
That would be helpful. And again, I guess, going back to the timeline, so do you, and in a number of, both on the financial component and just true reality of being able to build, and having project delays, I'm very familiar with that. It's in my line of work. So I, and you had mentioned project management and being able to be prepared for that. So I look at that, and I see, I don't know if that timeline's realistic. So I guess, what's the rebuttal to guaranteeing that that vertical construction will occur in time?
Well, first of all, as you know very well, the design of the school needs to be adjusted. And so-
Could you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry. Well, the design of the school itself, at this point, needs to be adjusted, because, you know, a school for 1,400 students and a school for 800 students is obviously very different. That's point one. And point two, until we get down to the point of closing the contracts and seeing, you know, the availability of material, the availability of the workforce, it's very hard to, at this point, make a projection as to how long is it going to take. I can assure you that we will make sure that before we begin the construction, or that we begin the construction of the school with extra time, in case anything happens, so that should there be too much rain, you know, you know the situation.
Right, right.
Should there be too much rain, too much water, too much, whatever it is, there is a contingency.
And for single days.
Exactly. But, you know, a lot of times, when you start these projects, you say, "Okay, well, this is going to happen, and this is going to happen." So a lot of project management, one of the things that you learn is, "Okay, this is not going to happen, and what are we going to do?"
And that's not, and starting at that point, that's where I look at it from a project manager, the timeline is key. And so I'm concerned with that. And so at what point-
But that's why we brought that special need or that ability into the board, because we want to make sure that those qualities, or should we say, those abilities are not something that is outsourced. And then the board is told what is going to happen.
I guess the timeline is what I'm-
The timeline is tight, which I understand. I think what was appealing is the fact that the land is already purchased. I mean, one of the things that was certainly a hurdle, even in Hillsborough, was that the land didn't close and get built on time, is what it was supposed to have. I think here, in this case, the opportunity is, if the school is approved, and we understand where we are timeline, we would know well in advance if their construction is really going to make that timeline. We don't want to go through a delay again. That was a terrible experience. It was terrible for everybody. It was terrible for the parents. It was terrible for the staff. It was an emotional roller coaster. We have the opportunity, if we really needed one, to take a planning year, and we're not opposed to it. If we all agreed, and the board went, met with your board and said, "Hey, here's where we are with construction. There's concerns. You know, how do you feel about a planning year?" The goal isn't to rush it. The goal is to do it well. So-
I agree with that. And again, it goes down to whether you can fill those seats. So I know my time is up, so thank you very much.
I agree with Shirley, that this is really important. This needs more time than what we're getting here.
You have another half hour. You have another half hour. I'm not going to take your time away.
You're eating up my minutes. I'm really concerned about the independence of the board. And especially when you talk about the timeline in which the board was founded, it certainly gives the appearance that there's an independence issue. And so I want to direct your attention, you had adequately described what it said in the governance part of the application, but I'm going to draw your attention to the legal relationship on page 131. It specifically states that the ESP will have supervising responsibilities of the school's principal, as delegated by the board. They will work in partnership with the board to manage the school's principal, budget, financial obligations. When you're managing the principal, the budget, the financial obligation, you're managing the school. I mean, if you control the money, and you control the boss, you control the school. So I understand what the governance part says, and the governance is quite clear. But this, I see conflicts somewhat. So could you please talk about the independence of the board? As it relates to this part of the application? And I read verbatim. Jennifer, I'm sorry, I called you Giuliaro.
No, it's okay. I didn't notice, actually. I just figured we were dialoguing. I think that the main word there actually can say and should say supports, because I do see, for me, that that role is where I work directly with our school principals, and I do do walkthroughs with them, and I do provide help and support. And we're a part of the Florida consortium, you know, evaluation tool, and we do side-by-side. Those are the things I do like to do, is to be in the school and support. The board gets principal reports at all of the monthly meetings. They come directly from the principal. They are the ones making ultimate decisions on the principal. They are the ones who have to vote for and approve the principal. Our role in the past was to help identify quality candidates and bring them. So for example, in Hillsborough, we identified a couple of candidates, and the board did all of the interviews and the reference checks, and voted on who that principal was going to be.
Actually, yours references that you guys will do the interviews and get it down to a certain level, and then it goes over to the board. So in here, it's a little bit different.
Right.
I love, I love to read. But getting to the part where we were talking about the location. And the location where you're building is a place where we have dedicated a lot of resources to, because we've had issues with achievement gap in that area, and we have been trying our best, many different programs, a cocktail, if you wish, trying to solve those issues, to bring them up to the, up. It's a lofty goal to get them to the district level, which maybe isn't attainable, but at least get them up to be higher than where you're at. But you're saying that you're going to get these kids higher than what they are at the district as a whole, 2% higher. So what do you know that we don't?
Well, that's where STEM is your great equalizer.
But we have STEM. STEM isn't something we haven't already done before.
I know, but I think the way in which it's proposed in this application might be a little bit different. It's more of a philosophy that's pervasive throughout the school. It isn't just a elective course, or a part of a day for a certain percentage of the students. It'd be STEM for all. You know, and also, the way in which it'll be proposed and implemented is, it's a very engaging program. So students who are very high-level, or students who are not as high-level, will still have that engagement. They still get the benefit of the hands-on activities. They still get the benefit of the partnerships. They'll be reading and writing across the curriculum, and math is integrated throughout the program.
So I just want to be clear, since this will be part of the application, this will be part of the contract. So if you are not able to be 2% more than the district as a whole, you won't have a problem when we don't renew your contract?
That's a hard question, and I think it's fair.
Because I'm telling you, we got the best teachers. I mean, we have got best teachers. We have staff who support those teachers. We have programs that we have in place. We have community who are supporting us. The level of love and support our students get is unmatched by anybody. And so for you to come in and say, "Not only are we going to bring these kids up, we're going to beat the tail out of the entire district with these kids," and just telling me the word STEM, that doesn't get to me, that doesn't get me to that place. So it, I mean, I'm worried about the independence, and I'm also worried about the, I want to make you successful. I just worry about, you know, are these achievable goals? Are these, are you actually going to be able to execute on the plan? Doing the building is great, but gosh darn it, if the education part, that's what I care about. I understand that, you know, being able to build the building is important, but you better be able to build that foundation with those kids. And telling me that you're going to be able to do 2% of the district in that area, I don't know. I'm the new guy on the block, but that just seems like hogwash to me.
So your question is a little bit tied to yours, only on, related to the area, and why in this, why in this area, as opposed to where some of the other growth is. And I mean, I know where I live. I know my area is growing, too, because I'm actually further west of 75, on the south side of Sarasota, and there's a lot of growth there. For us, the idea was, this is an area of kids where, out of all of Sarasota, which is, I mean, I live here on purpose, and my kids go to school here. It's one of the best school districts in all of Florida. I know that. I live here because of it. And this is the only area where some of the schools struggle. These are some of the struggling kids. And it is some of the stuff that we looked at in the subgroup data of economically disadvantaged kids and other kids that are, it is a more at-risk area as far as Sarasota goes. This is kind of a corridor that we felt was more the right thing to do, to provide that equity and access to things that they may not have before. It is really important to me to be able to look at that. I think one of the strengths that was notated here in the actual application was related to the MTSS process and identifying kids at risk. That's the only reason I really do this job, is to get into the schools, to get into the classes, and say, "Why is there an achievement gap? What can we be doing?" I'm not saying at all, and I don't think anyone here feels that Sarasota County is not. And I think that the teachers are great, and the support is great. I just also think that it's one more way that maybe we can reach those kids and bring those scores up. Is it going to happen in the first year? It's not, and everybody knows it's not. But long-term, over a five-year contract, do I think that we have an opportunity, when everybody who's a part of the board, and the other three board members who aren't here that are educators, and that's what they do, that are committed to it, I think at least we have a chance to do that. And looking, I agree with you. Those are our most at-risk type of kids in some of those areas, and those are the only schools that tend to struggle compared to some of the other highest-performing schools. Sarasota's not a county anyone's going to apply for a charter application and say, "We're going to do better," or "We're going to..." I'm saying, with this particular group of kids, I think we have a chance, for what we have, to say we can do that.
Jane?
But you did.
Talk a little bit about professional development. Who's responsible for professional development, and what do you consider using for professional development, at least initially in the first year?
Thank you, Conan Antoin. Sure.
Well, so professional development will mostly be provided by the, well, the school administrator. So the principal is typically in charge of kind of connecting the students or the teachers to the professional development, and then also in partnership, right? So the Moat Marine has already offered to provide a lot of professional development for our staff. And then, so really, the principal is the one who would organize and structure, that coordinate the professional development as needed. So it's, prescriptive is the word that was used in there, because you, you know, once you see your demographic of students, and you have your staff, then you can be prescriptive to the professional development that your staff most needs. You prioritize.
Mr. Wechter offered to provide you with a resource and a partnership with Riverview, but he really doesn't have the ability to do that. And most of your students would not be normally assigned to Riverview High School, out of, when you build up to, through middle school, through eighth grade. They'd either be going to Booker or to Sarasota High School. You do understand that?
Yeah.
Have any of you ever been, or anybody that's on the board, ever been involved with New Point Tampa or Pensacola, the charter school?
No.
No. So I'm sure that that's a question also over here, and the answer to that is no. And there was confusion as to whether anybody was related to any of that. And that is certainly going to go way beyond anybody's five-minute conversations of what that looks like. But the answer is emphatically no, and I would be happy at some point if you wanted to know more about that.
I would love to discuss offline with Daniel sometime, Hawaii schools, because they're not very good. And I'd really like to have some discussion with you at some point on that. But looking back at the lease cost per student, you had given a number in your proposal of $900 per student. That's high. Could you explain why the rationale is for $900 per student in terms of a lease? Maybe Frank, you can do that.
I don't recall that part of-
No, so I think two of our other board members worked on that. And we really tried to make sure everybody has a different area of expertise. So in the capacity interview, I'm sure.
Yeah.
About 500 is the normal rule.
I was going to say that when I started reviewing these applications many years ago, the 5 to 750 range was the range. I have seen both the real costs of facility and construction costs go up, and I've seen that number creep up to that 900 level. But we'll check to make sure.
You understand that we have STEM classes in all of our middle schools, and that's in all four of the academic requirements, English, math, science, social studies. And these kids have a lot of technology at their disposal, and we've been using that for some time. So it's really been a good thing for us, and I think you should be complimented on coming up with that. But when you come to teachers, you know, teachers are in short supply. We don't have many in teaching institutions right now. You know what's happening at University of Florida or USF. They're all in short supply. Are you going to provide us with certified teachers, and where are they going to come from?
The answer is yes to certified. I think that, again, the reason that we are choosing to be in certain counties is because we have a pretty large network of teachers that we've worked with in Sarasota County, Hillsborough County, and Manatee County, that are very supportive of it, and would love to be a part of that. The Moat Marine has also offered, again, as part of that professional development, access to some of the teachers already trained in that. But a big piece of it is having a network of people you already know. When you have five or six teachers, or you have a good relationship with five or six teachers, and they have, you know, five or six other certified friends coming out of school, most of the time, word of mouth and relationships is the most important way to build your staff.
Do you think we have teachers in our school district that will want to come and work for you and leave our school district?
I'm obviously not saying yes to that question.
Well, you mentioned 40,000 as a starting salary, and that's below our starting teacher. And you mentioned 30% as the burden slash benefit package.
Right.
Would you be buying into FRS? Would you have your own benefits, et cetera? I mean, how would that-
Right. The other schools, we all, we have our own. We set up the teachers with a savings plan through, I think it's a 403B. That's not my specialty, but I'm pretty sure that that's what it's called. And there really and truly are, my goal is not to underpay teachers. I think when we talk about what those averages are, you know, some are going to be experienced, and some are going to be brand-new, especially to do a STEM project. I mean, a lot of times, some teachers that have been in the field for 25 years, that's not what they're interested in doing, and newer teachers have that. What I think has worked best for us is you look at your grade levels, and you make sure you have one very experienced teacher at every single grade level as an anchor and as a team leader, and then also support that with newer teachers to balance the budget. I don't feel that getting teachers will be as difficult because of that network, for better or for worse. I think that having good school leaders with good relationships is the most important part to staffing.
I think Building Hope is a good partner. They do a lot of work with charter schools. They do everything from a new roof to a new building. So they've been a viable bank, if you will, in helping to work with charter schools. And I think the consortium also offers a lot of professional development at a very low price. Shirley?
I think, following up on that discussion on staff, STEM teachers in particular are often hard to find. Those are some of our last positions to fill, because, you know, the public sector can't compete to the private sector in what they can get paid. But in your application, you talk about your teachers are going to be putting in, you're going to have 1,200 more hours of education a year, I read?
Instructional hours or PD hours?
Yes, instructional hours.
The answer is yes. We did build a longer instructional day to make sure we had protected time for interventions and for acceleration, which I don't know off the top of my head without looking.
All right, so that 12, I don't know where that name came from. I didn't make it up. I read it somewhere in here. So 1,200, you're going to pay them, well, I guess, they'd be starting salary at 40,000. So I don't know, maybe you can get some of our three, four, five, seven-year teachers to move over there, and start all over again. But then asking them to put in these extra hours. I mean, right now, I mean, if they work extra hours, they get extra pay, or supplements, or something. But, you know, your program says that if a student needs tutoring-
Right.
-your teachers will either work before or after school, and there's no charges to the parents. So, you know, I have, I think it's going to be hard to get- the parents. So, you know, I have a -- I think it's going to be hard to get the staff at your rate, let alone asking them to put in 1,200 extra hours a year. You kind of said you don't think you're going to have a problem with that.
No, and I know that there's a part, which I don't have the full book in front of me to find the specific page, related to teacher stipends, and it is a free after-school or extended learning program, I believe is exactly what we called it, for kids that required the additional tutoring. And it's not fee-based for parents. But we do have places in the budget for teacher stipends, lead teachers, and after-school, separate from an after-school program, but for the tutoring you're talking about. And I think there was a question in here about sharing or submitting what the salary scale or salary structure is, so we'll have that turned in.
And my question goes also to you, specifically, Jennifer. You say you live in Sarasota. How long have you lived in Sarasota?
I just moved back here about a year and a half ago. I had lived here for four years, and I moved.
But I thought last year you were a principal in North Carolina.
I moved here, I moved back here a year ago. So, well, 14 months ago. I came back in last July. Not this July that just passed, but a year.
Oh, so apparently Google wasn't up to date. It said you were a principal last year in a North Carolina school.
Right, well, last year.
And Justin Matthews was also. So, you moved here July of 2016 or 2017?
16.
And you're working with this school in Tampa now?
Yes.
And you also are working in North Carolina on this national, this state board and all that. Do you think that's going to be spreading you a little thin between all these areas?
Well, I mean, I'm happy and able to do the traveling.
Plus, you're a mom, too, right?
I am a mom, too. I'm certainly busy with my kids, and my kids are here.
We both get up at around 4:00 AM.
Yeah. I don't sleep a lot. I like to do what I do. Being in the schools is really important to me, and I visit my other kids' schools. I came back specifically to Sarasota because we lived here for four years, and it's my favorite place to live. North Carolina was not on the stay list or the go-back list, and this is where I want to be.
The, I have a concern that, and it was something I brought up last year, or maybe the year before, referendum dollars, that, you know, the referendum dollars are local tax dollars, that our local taxpayers agreed to -- and it bothers me that these management companies take 8% off the top of even those referendum dollars. Do you plan to take 8% of all dollars, including those referendum dollars, if you're granted the referendum dollars?
So, we did not execute a contract yet with our board, and it is, I'm certainly negotiable, and we don't know if there's going to be referendum dollars or not. And I really hear your concerns. I mean, I'm paying a lot of property taxes, too, and I have, you know, three kids in private, in public schools and one in private, because that's what my one child needed. So, we didn't, the board didn't execute a contract, and I think that it's fair for them to say what's fair. And what are other management companies charging is neither here nor there. We want to do it and do it for less. We don't have infrastructure, and I live at home, and I don't have a big office, and the travel is on me.
Yeah, well, I get some complaints from the local taxpayers that their local tax dollars are being sent off to these,
Right, I understand that.
companies that don't have anything to do with this. You find all kinds of information on the web, and I'm not sure if this actually, you're -- let me see if I got the name right. Fabio Galapi from Miami?
Yeah.
He was talking about some action that was taken by the U.S. government against a Fabio Galapi in regards to a church that, what was the name of the church? Santa Yama Church that was chartering planes down to Cuba for Santeri. Is that you?
No, actually, that's a business that was a person called Pierre.
Oh, no. It said Pierre was one. That was another one. But then also, Fabio also had one, and they were both told to Florida.
I did not ever have never.
Corporate records show that Santa Yamana Ministries was established in October 2003 by Fabio Galapi. The principal place of business was 9741 Northwest 31st Street in Doral. Is that you?
Santa Yama, yes. However, the relationship to everything else, no. Sorry.
Move the mic over, all the way over, because you lean.
Is that better? There we go. I'm so sorry. So, the answer is yes, I did incorporate the business back then, but then I did not do, or I was not involved in any of the activities. And at that moment, I believe there was a tie-in, and then later it was shown that there was no relationship.
Okay, but it says that it was enjoined against them for, I don't know, it was either a Santeri church group or a sham for taking people over to Miami. I don't know which one it was, but you're saying that wasn't you, that was your brother, even though you incorporated the company?
No, what I said is that I incorporated the company that you were referring to, which is Santa Yama.
And what company was that? What kind of a company is that?
That was a company that provided, how do you say, marketing services. I have done marketing most of my.
So, you did the marketing for the travel?
No, I didn't. I incorporated the company, and then decided not to move forward with the company. The company remained incorporated. And then, when, I believe, many, many years ago, there was an investigation or something in reference to...
There was a religious travel license or something like that. Okay, so.
Right. So, I never, I never did anything with it.
That goes back 10 years ago, and you didn't do anything with it.
And so, then it stayed there.
You don't have nothing to do with Santeri. Okay.
No, I don't, actually.
The last question I have is, for this round, the school, we just went through hurricane scares, and I understand that charter schools don't have to be built to the same building standard that private, so they don't have to. They can't, as are public schools. But if the school isn't built to withstand a certain hurricane level, I know in Miami, you've got to build to a certain hurricane level. Do you have any idea what hurricane level this school is being built to withstand? Because if it blows away, we're going to have to take in those kids, I would assume.
So, I can tell you, the school that we were a part of for the construction in Hillsborough was not only built to code for the hurricane and did not have issues, even though it was newer construction during the hurricane. We have two buildings, classroom building and a gymnasium building, and the gymnasium building was actually built as a shelter for others and is able to be used as a shelter for evacuees to stay in. So, I know we didn't have to board up or do anything. It was all built hurricane-resistant, but that the gymnasium itself was built to be an evacuation shelter.
Good to know. Going around again for closing remarks, or?
Bridget, you, whoever wants to turn can take it.
I'll be brief.
If you don't want to, don't.
I think that, a couple things. Transportation's always a big thing to me when it comes to school choice. You can have, we call them schools on the moon. I mean, it's great to have them there, but if they can't, especially the target students that you're talking about, if they can't get there, what's the purpose? And so, I would, the transportation portion leaves much to be desired, and I know we addressed it already, but that is, to me, fundamentally, one of the biggest things. If you're able to satisfy all the other elements, that component's humongously important to ensure that the media students that you are identifying as targeting, that they can in fact get there. And transportation is always an issue when it comes to school choice. Second, you know, I think from a, there's a lot of different intertwines that there are various members that have been involved with various charter schools. And so, but what I'm looking for is, you know, the Broward School and the grades concern me, because our B and C, I know they're newer, but I'm still somewhat concerned. But what is the track record, or what is the model that really just makes this worth being in Sarasota County?
The model of this particular school or the ones down south?
Well, I mean, what you're bringing forward, essentially, is going to be taking place potentially in Sarasota.
Sure. So, like I said, and it was funny that you talked about the Hawaii demographic, very difficult demographic to work with, and this model was very similar to the one I ran with tremendous success. So, it wasn't an easy demographic to work with. So, I know the word STEM gets thrown around a lot, you know, and it's STEM this, STEM that, and no one really knows what STEM means, you know. So, we tried our best to articulate what it'll mean in this campus. So, I understand that Sarasota does STEM, but this is a different type of STEM philosophy. And so, it's going to be hard to articulate what it truly is. But it is a unique program that will leverage the partners in the community, and that instantly gives you access to expertise that you wouldn't have in your building, right? So, you have Ph.D. scientists at Moat, you know, you have expertise at the First Green Bobby Jones Partnership, and we'll look to build more partnerships, because you provide that expertise to your students, and now you've brought in the horizon. So, but as far as what it looks like on a day-to-day basis, it'd take a long time to talk about it. But it's an engaging, hands-on program. STEM is pervasive throughout the entire day. Math is integrated throughout the day, technology, and I know, you know, technology, again, is something that gets thrown around, but, you know, it'll be technology, applied technology and applied mathematics. So, they'll be leveraging it. It isn't just, here's an iPad, and, you know, just for iPad's sake. They'll be using it as a tool to solve novel problems. So, it'll be collaborative, it'll be engaging, and it'll be open-ended type programs where they're forced to think. And when you create thinkers, the test scores take care of themselves. So, it'll be a very unique program. And again, it'll be hard to, it'd take me a long time to articulate.
And I can always circle back with you offline.
Yeah, but I may very quickly. I'm looking for either points of comparison or points of differentiation. The Hollywood School in year one with its STEM focus placed regionally in first, second, or third place in robotics competitions, won both the regional and won the national robotics. So, the program took off very quickly in a very successful way. One additional thing that I believe made us apart is that we believe in our mission, and we are a mission-driven school, that not only do we want our students to perform well in the high-stakes standardized tests, we also want to make sure that we're developing not only learners and leaders, but good human beings. There are too many smart people out there that just don't turn out to be good human beings. So, a lot of our programs are value-based. We follow Stephen Covey's Leader in Me program. We're very careful to keep a good eye and be very attentive to the social and emotional learning needs of our students. So, I do think that's something that sets our motto apart.
Thank you. I yield my time. Erin?
I just want to follow up. I want to do a couple of things, but initially, I just want to make sure you understood where I think Ms. Goodwin was coming from. In double E, under Contract for Charter Consulting and Management Services, on item number...
What page are you in?
I'm on page 146 of the application. And in paragraph six, and I'm sure you're aware of this, this is what she was referring to, "ISC shall pay ASE a service provider fee of 8% of total revenues, whether from local, state, or federal sources." I would read that to me that that would include the refund dollars. But be that as it may, I just wanted to make sure that people understood why she was saying that. I saw that you were going to follow our student progression plan, which you're more than welcome to do. But I want to make sure that you have an understanding of our student progression plan. So, can you tell me some unique aspects of the Sarasota County Student Progression Plan?
You can take that.
That are different from other counties? Something that's unique to the Sarasota Student Progression Plan?
What's unique about Sarasota as compared to other counties?
You said that you're going to follow the Sarasota Student Progression Plan. So, I want to be comfortable that you understand the Sarasota Student Progression Plan. So, my question is, what is unique about the Sarasota Student Progression Plan? It's okay if you don't have an answer.
I'd have to look and see. I wrote this a fair bit ago.
No, it's not in writing. All it says is, "We will follow the Sarasota Student Progression Plan." You did not write the Sarasota Student Progression Plan.
But nobody wants to.
But as you know very well, it is our job to find the right resources to make sure that our desired goals are.
I just want to make sure that you understand the Sarasota Student Progression Plan, because that's the progression plan you're going to be using. So, it's in your application. I just want to know if you understand your application. That's all I'm asking. I think the answer is, I think the answer is clear.
We downloaded it, and I think that when we looked at it, it's different than Manatee Counties, and it is different than some of the others, and it's different, for example, in Broward, where we're working with. So, for our students that were struggling in middle and high school there, in the Hollywood campus, we worked with their progression plan on what credit recovery and what course recovery options that those students had and what that looked like. Our goal here is not to do different or recreate the wheel. And when we looked at it and talked about it, we said, "We want to follow their plan. It's going to work better for our students." So, I don't have it directly in front of me.
That answers my question. And I just want to go back to the fact that you're saying you're going to be 2% above the district. And so, I want to understand, besides just using the word STEM, because you've already said people...